Members, members of the administration and guests, the time is, oh goodness, I need a pen. 6:06 PM and I'd like to call to order the December 9th, 2025 School Committee Special Meeting held virtually online. We have a quorum present, so let's begin. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes listed in the agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, I heard that from Jen Sears and Armando's second. Motion has been moved and seconded. We're going to do a roll call vote. I will call your name and then you will vote. Starting with Armando Arbosa.
Aye.
Gillian Di Stefano.
Aye.
Karen Powers.
I think she left the meeting. I think she went to the other link.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Jen Sears.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. All right, we are in executive session. Greetings. The time is 6:18. Welcome to the December 9th, 2025 Special Meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. The meeting is being held or being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance, to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we open every meeting, I'd like to read the certain school committee operating norms. Agree to disagree, assume positive intent, be outcome driven, be prepared, be respectful, celebrate our wins, the district and each other, challenge the issue and not the person, have fun, manage time wisely, put students first, resolve the issues during the meeting, speak from one's own perspective and speak with one voice. That being said, I would like to note that there is no public comment during special school committee meetings. We're going to go straight into the agenda items for today. Going right into the budget. So Dr. Baez, I believe that you have prepared an overview of the budget for us. So I thought we'd start by having the administration present the budget and then I will open it up for questions from the school committee. Dr. Baez.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett, if you would put up the PowerPoint, please. Yes. As per the chairwoman's comments, this would be an overview. You have the line item budget that was finalized after four working group meetings. Thank you to Heidi and Matt and Jonathan for and Julie for being so diligent and attending all those meetings and then all of our administrators attended the meetings as well. Organized in a kind of a review of that area, if you will, for accuracy and authenticity of what we're trying to do. As we, Jeff, do you have the PowerPoint up?
It's not letting me bring it up. Give me a moment. I'm going to try to work out those technical issues.
So as we're looking on those issues, the, there are five key components to the FY27 budget and I would say actually a six that is an issue as well. First, the idea of special education costs and mandates, including a significant number of increase in FTEs to meet these mandates. Transportation increases across the board. Contractual obligations. You'll see in line item 100, excuse me, 1,000 that there's money put aside there for Unit A and Unit B, and that's why it's such a significant amount of money in that line item. Now I'll get to it towards the end of this. The enrollment trends are showing continuing increases, especially in two areas, out of district placement for IEP students and an increase of IEP students overall. You actually heard this number at the last school committee meeting presented by Mr. Clark about the increase of 94 students onto an IEP since June and until November of this year. And also increasing our overall average of IEP percentage to 21.7% or about 1% higher than the state average. And that all comes with a cost. And there are no increases to general education staffing. I want to repeat that again. There's no increases. I didn't put number six on here, but number six then really is the connection to the triennial plan. Where in section, one section, the EL and introducing world language justice probably not going to be part of this budget. Special education is beginning to meet its triennial plan. Our portrait of a graduate is moving forward and our literacy is moving forward with limited funds. Next slide, please. If you recall, the FY26 approved school committee budget was not, was not what was approved at town meeting. Our current budget is $67,256,251. Our recommended budget for next year is $73,077,362, an 8.66% increase. Next slide. The recommended budget of $73 million and a town recommended budget of three and a half percent. So this is the starting of the process where the departments, if you will, and everyone is told roughly, these are the numbers we're thinking of, is at three and a half percent, which brings our budget to $69,610,220 from the original prior slide of the 67,256. So getting a three and a half percent increase means that we currently have a shortfall of $3,467,142. I use the word shortfall because we have an increase to our budget of over $2 million, the three and a half percent. But that will not meet our current expenses and I'll get into what that means. We are still pending House One in mid-January. Legislative recommendations in January of '26. And you may recall that there's been about a dozen statewide meetings on taking a look at the state formula and the impact that it's had on about 200 communities that have had what's called hold harmless contingency. In other words, they're only getting that $30 to $100 per student. I actually came from one of those districts. So as a shortfall, that's where we are right now and I'll talk a little bit about why in a few. Next slide, please. If you look at the line item budget, you'll see that the administration line item 1,000 is, includes our set aside for negotiations with Unit A and Unit B. So that's why it's a it's significant increase. That's not administrative salaries or my salary or any of that. Literally, we're, we're putting in money that we're trying to negotiate with, which is grounded on the number that we met in executive session about. And I won't get into that because we are negotiating. Net of sped, sped grant funding is line 3,000, which, which is up. Please recall that our shelter funds are already being utilized in FY26. And so therefore they're not available for FY27. And that's what made up some of the shortfall from last year. And most of our circuit breaker will be utilized in FY26. We will have some carryover. We just don't know what that is yet. And we won't know really what that number is until the spring because we still got, right now, we've got at least one pending out of district case. That could be a significant cost. We just don't know that yet. I will tell you that as I look at these line items, next slide, please. We have no new general education positions for FY27. So in terms of classroom sizes, as you may recall, over the summer, we had to add some. Those are still in this budget, but we will look at those very carefully based on enrollment. Our enrollment figure should be, projection should be coming out any day now with NESDEC. That, as you know, that's a, an area, a, a projection that we really use to try to figure out, do we need another teacher or can we potentially not have that position or move that to position to another area? That's typically what happens. There's no new ELL position for FY27. That's, that's a first in the last couple of years and, and that's, we get some steady numbers in that department, as you recall, from the prior school committee meeting where our ELL or MLL Director, Dr. Quahly, presented about that stable number. We have no new administrative positions for FY27. And we have no new support positions for FY27 in general education counselors and so on and so forth. Next slide. So this is where it happens. We've had to make some critical decisions around creating two more TLC programs. One at the elementary level and one at OMS. The reason for that is the students are moving into the next grade level from elementary. They go to middle school. We have to stop the program. At the elementary level, it's our preschool students, a significant number going from our grow program into our TLC program. That will require two full-time teachers and then two paraprofessionals at each station for a total of six FTEs. We are moving to have more of an inclusion model at our elementary schools, particularly our larger schools by bringing in 2.0 teachers in order to meet the caseloads and direct services. We are adding two paraprofessionals at the OMS for two specialized programs that we have down there whose numbers require that we have more staffing. We are adding a secondary reading specialist because of the number of students who are having some reading issues and their IEPs are calling for direct services. We are adding two speech language assistants. So instead of the traditional SL, speech language pathologist, these are speech language pathologist assistants. They are supervised by pathologists and they're able to provide a significant number of services. And then to be determined, but in the budget right now are seven registered behavior technicians who basically are at data collection around all of the students who have behavioral challenges within our schools. Net of that is also that this will offset that we're taking down our contract services line item, bringing that down. What does that mean? That means a savings because remember what we are actually paying a third party is significantly more than if we were to pay an employee, including the town side responsibility of healthcare. There's still a significant savings. Next slide, please. The budget allocations has just three or four graphs, including the delta of the numbers that you've been seeing. So all that this is showing us, and I'm sorry, it looks pretty small on the screen, but, but this really means is just taking a look at where those gaps have been through the years and increases in the changeovers. And again, you'll see that in FY27's proposed budget, the administration line is up significantly, but we know it's because of contract negotiations with Unit A and Unit B. Next slide, please. We have started to put together slides and we'll have many more. Thank you, Gillian, because I know that you've been pushing us on this, so we're going to continue to do this. There's a couple more slides that will be happening hopefully by next week's presentation, but we'll definitely be part of our workbook, if you will. And that is really taking a look at our specialized staff in terms of people. And so as you can see, 109 special education paraprofessional, 60 LLL paraprofessional, seven library, 12 kindergarten and one clinic at this time. So you can see a breakdown of the support staff. And then the last slide on this is our specialized staff of which you'll see on this, looks like the graph did not come up. Ah, there we go. We'll see the specialized staff as an additional reading teacher, which I just talked about. So that was 18, it's now 19. The interventionist in math specialists are at six, speech is at 10, but we added the two SLPAs. OT is at five, PT is at 1.4. And the specialist's total is 43 for a total of 86. So there's a total increase in this line item of, of three. I want to talk a little bit about, if we can go back to the special education slide on the additional staff. So this is really new positions. So you're talking about a significant increase here. So this is where your significant amount of cost is within this operating budget. So what are our choices here? So let's say for the sake of argument, I'm going to use the number 10. It's usually just under 10 or just over, over 10. I'm just going to use the 10. If you have 10 students in preschool who are in our getting ready for our world program or grow, and they're moving into kindergarten, that means that they're moving into our therapeutic learning classroom, the TLC. So that automatically requires literally a teacher and two paraprofessionals. And our numbers are higher than usual. And what I mean by that is it's typically four, five, six, not you know, such significant numbers. And those numbers are going to be growing according to my meeting this afternoon with some folks. In pre-K to five, we currently have 16 specialized programs. We would be adding, per this, we would be adding another program at the elementary level. So we would be at 17. Those specialized programs all allow for us to keep students in districts. I think you know that between the public cost for one student at a collaborative or the private, that that's going to range between the low number of 60,000 and the high number of, let's just say, a therapeutic setting or a residential of over 300,000. So when you start to look at, let's say, 10 students and you're moving out of districts, that could potentially cost you at minimum without transportation, $600,000 at a collaborative if they had the space and this parents and the students agreed. The parents and the district agree that that was the best placement. So we know that there's an offset of a better cost to us in doing this, plus we get to keep our students in district. When you look at OMS, we would be increasing the OMS program from six to seven, and you're going to see that growth over the next few years. Now, we're going to be in a lull for year one at the high school. But in another year from now, in FY28, there will be another specialized program at the high school. And then, as you know, as the sixth grade becomes seventh grade becomes eighth grade, then they go to the high school as well. So in this scenario, we're moving from a total current of 28 specialized classrooms and staff to a total of 30, which is pretty significant for a district our size. And as you've heard from the other night, the out of district number, which is at 70, and like I said, has at least one pending case right now. That's about 46% of our students out of district are on the ASD learning disability or artistic. And so that's a pretty, pretty significant. At the same time, a number of our students in our specialized programs are as well. Don't forget that between the grow, then the therapeutic learning center, the reaching independent through structured education RISE program, the learning center, LC, I'm just putting these out there. So when you see acronyms, you could maybe, when you see the alternative learning center, ALC, and when you see the language-based classroom, the LBC, and then we also have beginning at the middle school and going into high school, the ESP or the emotional program, the emotional support program. So we, we have a significant number of students that are in need of our support. What is really interesting is the growth of the number of students that registered in Stoughton, which was 209 new registrants to Stoughton as of November, of which 51 or 24% were on an IEP and were providing direct services to. So that is the big picture. I would like, if we could, to turn Jeff to just one more piece of information and then of course, all of the Q and A and/or more information added together for the committee. On the line item budget, Jeffrey. Page number one is the overall, and I want to talk a little bit about this because it talks about the, the 8.66% increase, which as you may recall, is just slightly higher than last year's, which also wasn't met. Within this budget, from this current year, we had to find the funds to be able to keep what we had. And that's what we did. We utilized the funding that we had to keep what we had in line from the alternative education program at the high school to the paraprofessionals in kindergarten and so on. And that's the reason why you see these types of numbers. But recall that we also are in our third year of not receiving level services within our budget. So level services, just meet the mandates, don't do anything creative. So let's, let's talk about that. We have a triennial plan that clearly articulates trying to become and do better with making sure that our students are learning another language at the elementary level and early on. That is not in this budget at this time. So we won't, we will have to either push that out or find other means to be able to do so, just as one key component. And so it's great to plan and we believe in the plan, but if the money or the resources aren't there, you can't carry out the plan. And so those are going to be some of the decisions that we have to make. Lastly, on the entire budget that I think is really important, in the presentation last week by the town manager and Elizabeth in the, our director of finance at the town, there were some set costs that have been established around insurance. And if you recall, I sent a memo out to everybody about, I don't know, six weeks ago. I'm happy to share that memo again. But just basically talked about those key points within the budget. And then lastly, our shared or joint cost agreement is something that needs to be further discussed because that agreement is, is from 2017. And the data on that sheet don't act up. And there's other things that we need to talk about between the school committee and the select board in, in the next, in the next few weeks and months in order to come to some type of, of resolution. So in talking to my colleagues, I'll finish this. A, Stoughton Public Schools is not alone. There's a lot of discussion taking place within the elected officials and a lot of pressure taking place around how do we fix this issue? Because of things like inflation that happened a few years ago, if you recall, that went through the roof and we just haven't been able to catch up. Just to use that very simple, not adding new positions, not because of a mandate, just looking at those inflation rates that took place and not being able to, if you will, meet them in order to pay your bills. We've all had to get creative, if you will. But there isn't a whole lot of place for us to go except for staffing. And by staffing, I mean all encompassing. I'm not talking about one individual department over another at this time because it's, as, as you know, I believe that those discussions happen after we get some real, real numbers, if you will, which doesn't happen until
Thank you, Dr. Baez. At this point, I'd like to open it up for questions. Armando, I saw your hand first. You're on mute.
Dr. Baez, I was wondering, with your discussion with your peers, have anyone or some of them suggested any potential solutions or is it just no one knows at this point?
There's a lot of discussion about the fair tax act that passed a few years ago and the amount of money that's in there that is supposed to be utilized for the purposes of public education, which is pre-K through 16. So includes the public higher education and transportation, which the idea there was roads, the T, bridges, that type of stuff. So I, I think there's going to be a lot of discussions around how do we, because there's going to be a significant number of districts. So last year, we started with a number of districts that had to make massive layoffs. That number was tripling this year based on, on the data. So there's nothing factual like out there yet, but I do think it's, it's a, it's a two, it's a two-part whammy. It's, it's the inflation issue that, you know, you talk to an economist, they would have told you a few years ago, we, we didn't meet that or that requirement. And then two, in our particular case, but in many particular cases, it's the number of students who need further support within the school day or with specialized programs or whatever the case may be.
Another follow-up question. In the last couple of years, we've actually proposed budgets and we've always managed to fall back into what the town recommends. Are we there now or is this, are we at a point where we cannot fall back?
It's a great question. So as you know, our process is that we have to pass in a budget by the 31st of December. So that's the reason why we're here tonight. And then we have another meeting coming up. I will tell you that I think that all of us believe that these numbers are going to be changing after, you know, the January announcement. And if, that was very clearly, I do not want to speak for the town side, so I'm not trying to, but I did watch the presentation from beginning to end the other evening. And there was a lot of, there was a very clear statement that this is the beginning of the process. That we're all in this boat and that we're in the beginning of the process. But we need to take this shortfall, as I'm calling it, and make it smaller as much as possible. That's part one. Part two, we're very proud as a community that we're not using free cash, but I'm going to continue to harp on that that was a plan over years that has been implemented over two years. So we're not using any free cash for any department for the presentation the other evening. And that's part of, you know, where are the funds and what other funds could you potentially use? And maybe when the time comes, the committee and I can have further discussions about that.
And third question, sort of a crystal ball question again. What do you see for this year? Are we going, we potentially receive more money? I think we did that last year than expected. Or do you feel it's going to be less of an increase from the state than last year?
Yeah, the, the increase is really going to depend on a couple of things. Number one, you know, I don't. Here's my concern. My concern is that the town of Stoughton, along with a number of other communities, with open arms, without any direction, welcomed, let's just say, 150 shelter students to our district. Those students, by regulation, have moved out, except for one student who ended up residing in the town. They're all gone. That decline of students leaving should not be used against the town of Stoughton's education budget. We, we were required to do this along, and I brought this up to my, my, my association. I've brought this up to Glenn Kuchar at MASC. Those communities should not just be quote, held harmless. In other words, we have, let's say, they, they say, well, now you have declining enrollment. That means you're only going to get $30 per student or $100 per student. I, I don't think the communities that, that stepped up should be left to, you know, to resolve that issue in the future. So that's my biggest concern that I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Gillian, I see your hand up.
Um, yeah, Armando actually asked a couple of questions that were, that kind of answered mine. I do have want, want to comment first, like while I was on the, the working group for this. Such a hand tied behind her back trying to build this when we don't know what type of revenue is going to be coming from the state and it's so difficult to have to plan ahead when not knowing how much money you're going to get. And it's, it's extremely challenging. And when I was at the school committee mask training, we are the only district in all Massachusetts that has a budget before December 31st, which puts us at a huge disadvantage. So that's my comment. My second for question for, for Dr. Baez was, you know, there have been some extreme significant increases in transportation costs, especially with special education. Could you speak a little bit about why those costs are so extremely high? I mean, even in the, the proposed budget, it's 1.6 billion dollar increase in special ed. And what are some short-term or long-term solutions to try to reduce that?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. So that, I think a couple of different things on that topic. Number one, we are one of those communities that are really at the bidder's feet when it comes to transportation. In other words, we know that, that they know, the companies know that we need to transport X number of students. And so therefore the cost problem comes with that. We've had daily runs for one student that cost over $300 for one student. So just take that and multiply it, you know, so on and so forth. We've been working with first student as to provide us more transportation. We've had a great improvement in our preschool this year by having students actually in school on time, safe on the bus with the proper seating. That was a problem for the last two years. With that comes an increase in costs. I believe that our capital plan should begin the processes looking at some I believe that our capital plan should begin the processes, looking at some local transportation with our own drivers. Those transportation units, if you will, can range around 100 to 110,000 dollars for a mini bus. That can put X number of students in it and pick up and drop off. I also think that would help with a lot of things such as school attendance with certain populations of students not coming to school. So that's going to be the big thing is, is how do we start to really manage our transportation costs by having literally some of our own transportation opportunities?
Thank you. Powers?
Good evening. It's always difficult to do this via virtual. With all the technology issues that we had, but it is important that we do it. On, so I just got some of this paperwork a couple of hours ago. So on the first sheet of the new one that I got under DESI account series 3000, it says other school services. And it goes into 25 approved and 25 expended. And then it goes to 26 approved. And then 27 proposed. And it looks like that 26 approved budget is down by like, I don't know, it looks like maybe $2 million. Is that the circuit breaker? Is that where the circuit breaker in the IDEA grant is coming up short? Is that where that's showing?
I'll have Heidi give you the details of that.
Get my mic on. The added district is down under the 9,000 series programs with other district special ed tuition. Well, that's where you're seeing that one. The other services is a combination of nursing. What are all the other things? Oh, essentially anything that's not direct teaching kids. So that's not under operations or out of district or instruction. So instruction, of course, is everything that's direct education and the rest of it. So you would have like nursing and. It's not coming to my mind right now and I just looked at it today, but. It's kind of like everything else that's not in transportation, things like that. But it's everything that's not direct instruction or OOD or operations and maintenance or administration. So all those other things like after-school activities or. These things that supports the kids and support the district, but are not direct instruction. If that helps. I don't have the detail to tell you what makes up that number right now, but I can tell you, send you an email of what, what makes up that number.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. So how long have we known that we were going to need to use these two grants to supplement our budget?
Well, at the beginning of the year. Let me, let me back it up. Last year, or maybe this year, if you look at this budget, you will see that the kindergarten aides, for instance, at all the elementaries had zero last year. We did not budget for them. And so we had the problem of our budget was higher than what the town gave us for money. And we also had kindergarten aides and alternative education at the high school and things not even in the budget. Cause at first we were trying to pare down things to get closer to the town's number. And then the budget that was on, that's, you know, online that we ended up with was also higher than where the town ultimately landed. We did everything we could to get down. In the end, the decision was made to keep the kindergarten aides after further investigation and seeing. How significant the need was in the kindergarten classrooms and advocacy by the principals and things like that. So in the end, those programs stayed. So we already had our budget higher than what the town ultimately gave us. We thought there'd be more money when the state announced its funding and we hoped that. And so that was a decision with the school committee last year, that that was the budget that was accepted and voted. But we ultimately voted a bottom line number to give, satisfy what the town was saying we had to give them. So in the end, those were kept and the only way to pay for that, a couple of things. We budgeted in this year over $500,000, which is, what he was aware when we, we did our presentation in shelter funds, which we did get, and that was fine. But we said at the time that that would be the last year of it, because the shelters were closing. So essentially half a million dollars we knew was not going to be available for this next budget. And then we had positions that were kept and we knew that the only way to do that and fund everything would be to use the, I call it the second year. We used to use one year behind on the IDEA, sped IDEA grant, the 240 grant. And, and now we're using the one year behind and the current year, one this year. And then circuit breaker, we also, it's about the only funding other than a grant that you can use beyond the first year, but you have to use in the second year. So the districts, even before, you know, I arrived here has had the position where they were able to use one year behind. You know exactly what to budget, because you knew exactly how much you got, for instance, last year, and you would budget it for this year. So to do that, I mean, I'm hoping it really depends on how the rest of the year goes, that we will have some of the current year receipts to roll into next year. But we don't know that yet. So really depends on how we land at the end of the year. But using that current year of the 240 grant, the IDEA grant, and some of the current year circuit breaker is really at least $2 million or so from those funds that is supporting keeping all the staff this year. So we would have, other decisions would have had to have been made to cut a lot more positions. So that's where we are to get through this year. And like I said, we'll see what we have at the end of the year on the circuit breaker carryover. You'll also see that on the offsets page, I'd like to delineate really what the offsets are, which we started doing last year when we revised this whole template. And the circuit breaker offset was, you know, a little over 2 million. Next year it's 3 million. The pluses and the minuses, if we have more places, it might be a little bit more circuit breaker. But certainly the cost of the placement will far exceed the amount of circuit breaker we would get for that placement. But right now I'm, you know, fairly confident that the 3 million, but I will say, it's just important for everybody to know. That circuit breaker is not a guaranteed percentage. So two years ago, they started reimbursing some of the transportation costs. And the last two or three years, I think three years, they have funded it at 75%. And what, what they, what it means is, I would say the placement's 100,000. They have, Desi has a foundation amount that the local taxpayers have to pay for each student. So I'm just going to say 55,000, it's in the 50s, but it's on the Desi website and it changes, goes up a little bit each year. So let's just say it's 100,000 for the placement and the portion that is not claimable is 55. We put in the claim for that student at 45. And then they will determine the percentage year to year. And the way that works is the state puts a certain amount in a bucket for circuit breaker. And depending on the claims that they get in July, that's when they'll have to be submitted across the state. It's really the amount of money in the bucket divided by, you know, spread as some equal percentage to everybody of the amount of the claims. The percentage is the end result. So it, it could be 75%, it could be 72%. Seen it low as 40 something percent, but that was years ago, so I don't think it will dip that much. So I do think we will get a little bit more than 3,000 if they stick to the 75% and we might get a little bit more in transportation. But it would be foolhardy, in my opinion, to be budgeting at the highest level that it might be. And so this is what is safe to project. So I just wanted to point that out too, that could be higher or lower. Hopefully it's at least that and hopefully a little bit higher, but we won't know that until next August or September. The claims go into DESI as soon as the year ends in July. They review it for the next couple of months and then they tell us what we're going to get. So. Budgeting for circuit breaker in the year that you're going to receive the funds is a little bit less certain to the exact number. You're, you know, you're estimating what it will be rather than a known number. So I just wanted to sort of couch that around that too, that consideration. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think the question might be, should we be using one-time funds in the operating budget?
Well, the, the grant and the, the funds that we're using are not one-time funds. We, you know, they're pretty, the IDEA grant is federal and it follows the federal law, No Child Left Behind signed in 92, that we are required to do this. So I really, I don't think there's any, even when they talked this past six months or so about at the federal level with grants, they made it clear that the special education grants will not be touched whatsoever. So those are, you know, those are pretty safe to do. And the IDEA 240 grant, which is also a federal grant through DESI, but it's not state money. So those two, circuit breaker is state money, but the IDEA grant is not. So it's. I've never seen where they have gone after either one of those, the federal one won't go away. And the state went, honestly, it's just a matter of whether they tweak the percentage to be 75% or 72. But usually if it doesn't make the 75, Department of Education goes back for supplemental budget. And the state has always funded a supplemental budget if they didn't have enough put aside. So I, I think that's pretty safe. But again, for this year, we are using two years of the IDEA 240 grant. And some of the current year circuit breaker revenue as well as last year's circuit breaker revenue. Hopefully not too bad, we'll, you know, just have to see how the year goes with additional cost and placements that rise. But we should have something, I'm hoping at least a million dollars to carry over, but we don't know that yet. We should have a better idea, you know, as the spring progresses where we'll be.
Dr. Bay, I see you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, just for, we stopped using one-time funds as part of the ESA funds. As I was coming in, that was the last year that those one-time funds were utilized. All the other funds that we have are literally recurring funds. They might change in the amount, go up slightly, come down slightly, go up. We don't know that, some of that yet. To Heidi's points, we can add one-time funds that we're utilizing within this budget.
Sorry, can I add two? Just one point, I also want to point out the Title I grant offset, which again is federal, a federal grant through the state. That amount is the equivalent of the salaries of the interventionists that, you know, is part of the Title I grant application. So while I don't think that will go away, if that grant went away, then the salary money would not be there for the interventionists. And presumably the interventionists, we would not be able to keep them. So, so there's not really risk there. It's tied to it, they're in the grant. If the grant's there, we, the grant pays for their salaries. If the grant ever went away, then we just would not be able to pay for the things that are written into the grant. So that one is really not risk. And but I, but I've never seen again, that's, I've never seen a cut to IDEA or Title I. That's Title I, not at all, and IDEA, nothing significant. So that helps.
Okay, so you're saying that for Heidi or Dr. Baita. Ms. Perkins or Dr. Baita, you're saying that we haven't added positions for. I think you said no new ones for general education, English language learners, administration or support going from 26 into this new budget 27. But we are adding 20, 20 new positions for our special ed department, 20 new positions. That's where the stresses are. Am I right? Is that what, is that what you're saying? Is that it's a special ed that's causing the, not causing, but it's, that's where our stressors are? We have a large influx, I'm sorry, because we're having a large influx. Is that what it is? Of autistic, I think I heard you say autistic students? Can you just clarify that for me?
I will, so, yes, I will. Couple of different things. The first one is that within our budget last year, we did have some class size increases over the summer. If you recall, I sent the memo out about class sizes in kindergarten. I think one was in the fourth or fifth grade that we had to put into last year's budget. But as you look at FY '26, the actual budget that we're in, moving into '27, what we're doing is we have students currently enrolled or new enrolled to the district. That are in need of specialized programs or we have to come to parents, understanding that we're going to be moving the kids out of district. That is not an option that's on the table going out of district for two reasons. Number one, we think we can do the education better here. And number two, that's not something that the parents and us want to do. So, so that's one. Two, when you look at our, our district students and our students that are in specialized program, all, many of them are within the archaic spectrum of the learning challenge. About 43% of our students that go out of district are within the artistic spectrum and need supports that we can't provide. And that's the reason why the parents, guardians and the school district comes out with an agreement to do an out-of-district placement. That can range anything from, from issues of behavior and so on and so forth. With the students that moved in, of the 209 student new enrollment that we had this year, we had just under 60, if I remember, I don't have it in front of me anymore, but just under 60, if I remember, was the number of students who were on an IEP. Of some, some of them who were in fact in need of specialized programming or some that already came with an IEP with specialized programming or students that have been with us and have moved into IEP specialized program.
Okay, yeah, I think you had said 24% of those 209 are going to be on an IEP.
That's correct.
Yeah, causing some, some stressors. So we're going to be, now I have two different papers here. One that says the town guidance was 3.98% and one that said the town guidance is 3.5%. And to be honest, I haven't, I literally just walked in the door and this was hanging on my doorknob. So I don't know what else in here has changed. I mean, I spent the week going over the one that I had. Now I have one that looks, well, at least it, you know, for a couple of things that I've looked at different, but I maybe just start there with, which is it that the town gave us guidance on?
So the original guidance was 3.98. At the public meeting last week on the PowerPoint, it said 3.5. I made the change to go with the 3.5 because that was what was publicly presented at the meeting. And it says school budget recommendation, 3.5% right on, on the presentation. So at this time, I'm going with the number that I've been provided, the 3.5. And so your budget that you were given today through the working group's work last week, where the working group found out through me that it was going to be 3.5. Has a different bottom number difference. It increased the difference, the three, the three, the 2.9 million became 3.4 million of a, of a shortfall. That's where the difference is. So we're using currently the recommended 3.5, but again, it's a starting point, it's not the endpoint.
And who is giving us this recommendation? Is it the finance committee?
No, the typical recommendation in the process comes from the town manager through the director of finance.
The town manager through the director of finance, not through FinCom?
That is correct. FinCom is a, FinCom must present a balanced budget to town meeting. They don't give us, if you will, the inroads of how much our budget can or can't be.
And the, and the town manager does?
The town manager under the current charter provides a number. How that ends up later on is part of your town meeting process.
Okay, and with his number of the town manager's number of 3.5% increase over fiscal year '26. We are coming up 3,467,142 dollars short of what this budget that you have presented requires.
Correct.
Including the stressors that have come from the special ed, the 20 new special ed teachers that you listed. And some other things that I saw in there. And that does not include this five, almost 5 million in grants? That's on here, the 240 IDEA? Cause with that, it looks like at 78 million dollars.
Yeah, the, the, the offsets in the budget are part of our operation budget as a total. So it does not change the 73 million dollars. It's part of getting to that. So it does not change the seventy-three million dollar. It's part of getting to that number.
Okay, so I see that on special education circuit breaker, we are anticipating that that's going to increase by eight hundred and sixty-five somewhat thousand dollars? Is that a forecast, Ms. Perkins? Is that, how do we come to that? Because that's, we're usually behind on that. Now we need to use that.
Right. So the, on the last page on the offsets, you'll see, yes, the eight sixty-five. But again, we're projecting three million to be the revenue that will be coming in. And we don't know yet if we will have some of the prior year, you know, revenue remaining at the end of this year. There's no way to know that yet. Depends on placements and a lot of things. So we might have a buffer. It could be zero. It could be five hundred thousand dollars. It could be eight hundred thousand dollars that we have left over from the circuit breaker, the second year of circuit breaker we're using this year that might roll in. We just have to see how this year goes. But this would be the new money that's projected. And the way we do the projection, just expounding, if anybody knows and doesn't want to hear it, please forgive me if I'm redundant. But essentially, like I said, we take, we take the students, we take the list of students as of the time we did the budget, which can change, minus the state, I'm just again using fifty-five thousand because it's easier math. We take every student's cost for their placement minus fifty-five thousand-ish that the local taxpayers are required to pay. And then you have the delta of, let's just say a hundred thousand minus the fifty-five, and we're going to claim forty-five thousand. And then we estimate seventy-five, seventy to seventy-five percent of that, because that's usually where it lands and says, this is how much per student placement we estimate. The circuit breaker claim will end up being, we won't know again until almost September, but, and you go, you know, generally a little bit conservative to go to seventy-five is, is really put you in a very bad position if it comes in less than you suddenly have in September, having to cut two hundred thousand dollars. So when.
That was my next question. It could come in less than that.
It, it, it could.
Seventy-five percent, could come in at sixty-five percent.
It could. And that's why I left off, you know, I just rounded it down to three million to give a little bit of room. And again, they have paid transportation, which was something new, some reimbursement on transportation the last two years. But typically, if the state is brand new, it's usually one of the first things that's cut. The state has a budget problem and they can't fund everything that they did in the past, they would probably cut the transportation portion before they would go to the OOD, which has been around forever, decades. So, so generally, like, there might be, there could, you know, there could be a couple hundred thousand more. It's way too early to project that. And honestly, even the transportation, we can't project at all because we won't know until the state passes their budget, which in a tough times can go into August or September before they pass their budget. It's not even done by July first. Sometimes that happened a couple of years ago, even like two or three years ago. And so you don't really know the number until the state gets all the claims, figures out the pot of money they have, divided by all the claims and, and everybody's numbers are increasing. So the claims from every school district is higher and higher and higher for that same pot of money. And the, the factor that they're going to apply, the percentage that they're going to apply, is the end result of that calculation when they get all the claims in. So that is a little bit conservative. And so we may have a little bit more, and we also may have some money carrying over. We won't, you know, we'll know at the end of the year. But again, you know.
Same for Title I grant? Because you more than doubled that one.
Well, so.
Went from two hundred to four thirty-five.
Right. So this year, for the first year, we had interventionists in last year, but this year, the, the way the grant is written, it's more on salaries or almost a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent, on the salaries of the interventionists. So, and again, there's no way of knowing what will happen with the grants, but we do believe that Title I will be safe. So we have five interventionists. And Mr. Ford's on, so he can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but essentially we have the interventionist in the grant now. It's really all, almost obviously essentially all salaries. So that's why, that's an offset. When grants are used for other extra things, I'll call it, like, oh, it's not the staffing. It's going to be for PD and it's going to be, those things aren't even in the grant, so you wouldn't take that part of the grant as an offset. It's just direct to the grant. So there's, we have grants that we pay for other things, but they are not part of our core day-to-day operational budget of the school day. And so we might say that's for, you know, professional development and that's for, you know, summer programs that, you know, if I can say, sometimes the L, you know, the Title III L grant, English Language Learners Grant, Immigration Grant, those might be for summer programs that are good to have, but if the grant got cut, those would just be cut. So those are not in the budget or offset with the grants. The interventionists, being full-time staff, are in the budget and then offset by the exact amount of their salaries. So if, if the grant goes, then presumably we wouldn't be able to have interventionists anymore.
So is this how?
I'd like to, I'd like to just pause you there at that, at this moment, just to give other school committee members a chance to ask questions. And we can come back to your questions if that's okay.
I'd just like to finish this on the Title I grant because Heidi was in the middle of it. And that is, how likely is it that we are going to see more than double on that Title I grant?
Again, it's not that the Title I grant went up. It's just that we did not have a reason to, we didn't have the costs that are written into the grant in the budget in the first place, so we wouldn't show the offset. We would have to have the cost in there to also have the offset to show how it's being paid for. Now that it's salaries and those interventionists are in the budget, then the offset is also showing because if you went through and found the interventionists scattered throughout in the different locations in the budget, you would see what the salaries are and you'd be able to see that the offset is that they're not costing the local taxpayers, though they're in there as staffing to show the parents, the public, everybody, we have interventionists. And this is our whole model of all the supports that we have for kids, right? But that it's being paid for by Title I. If we didn't have interventionists in and we were using it for all these sort of extra programming things, summer programs and whatever else, those costs wouldn't be in the budget and the offset wouldn't be there either. It's, it's a grant item that's off to the side. So, so hopefully that explains that better. And, and again, that fluctuates year to year, but the interventionists are, for as long as we have Title I, are, we anticipate that the interventionists will take up the vast majority of the Title I grant every year, and you'll see that continually, providing we have those Title I funds continually, which we have no reason to think we won't.
Thank you. Jen?
Karen answered, asked some of the things I was going to ask, but I guess, Dr. Bayetta, this one's really for you. So just to understand, we're going to add twenty positions, mainly special ed. We right now don't think we're going to be, have to cut any positions this year?
Pending the shortfall, we would, we would have to look at cutting positions. So.
What's the chance of us having a hundred and ninety-nine kids show up on the first day like they, this, this year, next year, too?
Yeah, our, our biggest concern is that we are now in year five of seeing this influx of students that happen. Right? And it might not increase us by two hundred kids. It might not even increase us. Increases us by forty. What's happening is with that also comes different opportunities for students and families, but also potentially added pressures as well in this school. We, we can only provide you the information that we have or that we are literally estimating that we are going to get. The, the biggest concern that I would have is this budget is whatever the final number is, and let's say we have to make cuts, whatever those cuts are, less than three point four million, let's say. Those cuts are going to have some type of direct services and impacts on students, increased class sizes, cutting of positions, whatever those positions may be, support staff, administrators, classroom teachers are typically the last to go. But, you know, if you're looking at a million dollars, let's say, you, you're still going to hit the classroom. There's just, there's, there's only so many bodies you can go after in order to be able to, to target that. The second part is, you know, this goes to town meeting. Town meeting is the final deliberator and, and supporter of whatever the budget looks to after we go through the process. So again, I'm going to start having my headache starting in January, House One comes out. That's when my headache every single year starts from, this is my seventeenth year of a headache that starts in mid-January, where we don't really know what we're getting right now. In my prior districts, I didn't have to worry as much because we didn't do our budgets until after House One came. So, so that's the process that we're doing. So yes, it would have to include cutting of staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jen?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bayette, I, I had two questions. One is, so we talk about the, the influx of students and, and the existing students that we had that are on IEPs. Is this something that's being reflected in other towns as well? Is this something that we're seeing statewide? Or is this a Stoughton specific issue?
Yeah, great question, Chris. Thank you for asking that. So this is not a Stoughton issue. If you take a look at the state average for IEPs pre-COVID, it was always around seventeen, seventeen and a half percent. Our state average, I believe I said to you earlier today, is at twenty point six. And it's been hovering right around there and climbing. So it's, this is a statewide issue, predominantly around issues of students deregulation at the younger age, where students are struggling with the traditional coming to school and so on and so forth. So more hands-on deck are needed. Anytime you, you create specialized programs, that requires more folks, if you will. It's still a cost savings to the school budget. I'm going to repeat that again. Were they cost savings to the school budget, therefore a cost savings to the overall budget of, of the town. It, it's just a fact. And then the, and then the, the last part is that as these students move from a K to V system, six years in the same building, to an OMS, three years, to a high school, four years, with that comes, if, if you're lucky, the teachers are, you know, you're, you're not having to hire new staff because you already have a program. You don't have the program or your numbers go up, which is what's happening. So mid-year this year, currently, we had a split, a special education program because of the number of students in that program. Because we can only, you have to, by regulation, it has to be capped. So we, we don't, you know, we don't control some of that. So when we say the word mandates, we're not saying the word Joe Bayetta's mandates. We're not even saying school committee policy mandates. We're talking about a federal document signed by the parent guardian and the district around best service for that student, regardless if they're in an inclusion setting, a partial inclusion setting, or a full sub-separate program.
Thank you for that. And my other question, you talk about the fact that the budget's not going to support the triennial plan recommendation to provide early language instruction. What is supported by the budget that's in the triennial plan?
Currently, I would say the issues around literacy. And the first one around what, what Jonathan has done with, with the Title I, with the interventions and making sure that we spent our money wisely, if you will, by making sure that we had people in every one of our elementary buildings versus certain elementary buildings not having it. So that will continue some of that support. Our coaching model currently is still in the budget. And so that also goes very much along with the literacy planning, even though, you know, we're looking at changes and all of that. The fact is that's still part of the implementation that we have going on. In terms of the special education area, this budget is moving in that direction because things like specialized programs are not part of necessarily just the triennial plan. But you take a look at the inclusion model, where we have high caseloads, that is within taking a look at our triennial plan in special education as an example. And I, I do want to say that Jonathan is leading the audit, internal audit review of our special education program and, and with Ed and special ed staff, but the idea is that we're looking at it from as, as different eyes as possible about our best interest going forward in the delivery of services.
Yeah, thank you. Gillian or Amando, before I go back to Ms. Powers, you, one of you have any additional questions?
No, not at this point. I'm still obviously concerned about busing. Primarily because I went to a band meeting to raise money for busing and I found out that a bus from Stoughton to Amherst, where they have a jazz festival, is seventeen hundred dollars per bus and they need two buses. So I got two giant boxes of candy I'm going to try to sell. But I was wondering if, if, if there's any way we can talk to the bus companies that we have a contract as to at least allow a bit of a discount for the, for the bands.
So the answer to that, to that is yes. And Amando, you're bringing up a great point because what happens is there's two ways to do the contract when you go out for a yellow bus, right? You can either go for just the transportation to and from school and leave out the bid for athletics and all the field trips and all of that stuff. And what you'll see is a hike in that, in the regular transportation. Or you have the contracts that most of us do, which is you have, if the company has the drivers and the buses, they have the right to the field trips, the band, and so on and so forth. But we can reach out and say to them, you know, this is an expensive cost, seventeen hundred dollars. And remember, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, there's a weight cost and there's a driving cost. That's the contract. But we can, we can reach out to them and say, is there something here? I just had a comment that came to me around a field trip that it would have cost two hundred and fifty dollars less if we went with another party than if we went with our contractor. And of course, I'm violating the contract. I can't do that. Because it's in, it's written in that contract. So you, you kind of gamble if you do and gamble if you don't. But I'm happy to re-just simply say, can we get some type of a break?
That would be great. Thank you.
Heidi, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add for anybody else that might be listening at home, while it sounds like, oh, you know, we are in this contract and that the bus companies are taking advantage. We all just have to remember that as a business, when they are bidding us or anybody else, they have their overhead, their costs of buying the bus and all of their overhead, and they spread that over what they anticipate they're going to be billing us and everybody else to factor in paying for those buses and their maintenance and their breakdowns and everything else. So it's, so I just, I just didn't want it to sound like the bus company was, you know, you know, highway robbery or anything like that. Obviously, as, as Dr. Bayetta just said, if we don't have those things in the contract, the daily buses to back and forth to school, that price would have been higher because they still have to spread those costs against each customer. So it's not necessarily a savings or a loss to have that stuff in or out of the contract. And generally, everybody keeps it in, so you have a reliable, you know what the cost will be per hour and you have a reliable bus company that will come to you rather than going out to somebody else that wants the bus on the same weekend or the same night, and they can get more money from the somebody else. They, they also owe us something because they have the contract. So I just wanted to point out why we choose that way. And historically, you know, Stoughton has, but every other district I've been in does too. So you don't want to be, and during COVID, I can tell you that anybody who did not have a contract with a bus company was in big trouble because those buses, they would just take on private schools and everything else. And then you, and you come September, we were worried about it in my last district, that we wouldn't have any yellow buses to start back to school when school started up because they would have just gone somewhere else. So I just wanted to say there's a lot that's factored in on behalf of the bus companies as well as from our side as well.
One, I'm sorry, I do have follow-up. Thank you for bringing that up. I, I think one of the, at one point, Dr. Bayetta actually proposed the school at least get a van, which we eventually end up dropping. I would love to see a cost analysis of perhaps a full-length van at minimum, or perhaps two, even if it's a used one, and determine what the cost would be for Stoughton to run it. Maybe we can share the cost with the town hall because they can probably use it themselves. And the, the town hall can probably give us a better estimate of how much it costs to, to run the vehicle because they have, the town has plenty of trucks and so on. And we can get an idea whether perhaps a purchase of a, even a lightly-used bus or two would be worth it for Stoughton. I guess my question is, is it possible? I guess my question is, is it possible to do an analysis and, and then let us know whether it's worth it or not?
Well, I'll, I can address that because I was actually down at the, the joint conference and I actually spoke to a bus company down there. And I actually, I was flipping through my folder here as we were talking because I, I have, if you will, a general cost of what a small bus costs, which is about a hundred and seven to a hundred and ten thousand dollars right now, according to this one vendor. And of course, we would have to go through the entire process. The issue comes down to, it's not going to cost us seventeen hundred dollars to go out to UMass Amherst with one of our drivers because we're, we're paying the driver, we're paying for that use of that van that's ours, if you will, or that mini-bus that's ours. But you're not, there's no sit time, wait time, right? It's, it's ours. It's, it's, I pay Armando, the bus driver, twenty-five dollars an hour. I fill up, he fills up the tank. We're all making sure the bus is safe, is safe, it passes inspection, so on and so forth. You drive out there, you're getting paid twenty-five dollars an hour to sit out there for eight hours, but there's no wait time associated as a charge as well because it's our product, it's our van or our team as an example. So, analysis-wise, long-term, absolute savings, I can tell you as somebody that bought a used purple, sorry, maroon van, even though our colors in Norton were purple, from a private school that was closing in Worcester, the mini-bus had twenty-two thousand miles on it. We, we paid thirty thousand dollars for it. And it brought down the cost of all of my trips for my small field trips and my small athletic trips. So, the wrestling state meet where only four kids go, or one kid goes, or the track meet where only three kids go, or the, the band competition at Plymouth State where only three kids are invited. All just brings all those costs down.
Excellent. I, I think something like that and potential for cost sharing, perhaps even with the recreation department when the school doesn't need a bus, would, would help out and perhaps even bring the budget down a little bit. And every little bit counts. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Powers?
So, on Mr. Barbosa's busing thing, I just want to remind people that we put that busing bid out and we only got one bid. So, it wasn't very competitive. So, that's, I'm glad that we have a contract and they're a great company. I understand they have overhead. But I also want to remind ourselves, one, only one bid came in. I know, Dr. Bayetta, I'll yield to you, but then I have a follow-up.
Yeah. So, real quickly, excellent point, Ms. Powers. There were four companies that came out. Only one made a, a bid. And currently, the legislature has a review going on by the, I want to say Inspector General, but Heidi, you might, it might be the Attorney General. Whoever it is, they put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a study of transportation bidding within the state. I just had to answer a, Matt, and then I had separate surveys that we had to answer that are like four hundred questions that we were asked around transportation. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's good news. I'm sorry you had to answer four hundred questions, though. That's a lot. The other thing I wanted to say with regard to what Mr. Barbosa said, but also a little bit on Dr. Bayetta and fundraising. And one of the points of fundraising, we used to be able to do something called canning. Some people know what it is, some people don't. So, I'll just give a quick canning is when you sit outside an establishment that allows you to sit outside their establishment. You hold a can and you ask people for donations for certain things. And I know the last time that I was involved in a canning situation at a busy Stoughton restaurant, who I love, we made three thousand dollars in one night. That's how generous Stoughton was to the students who are out there canning. Now, I know Dr. Bayetta has reasons for not wanting children to do that. And, and he, hopefully, I'm asking him to, to tell us that again. But I just want to put it out there that if we were, if Pops, who is a prophet, put together a canning drive at a really awesome Stoughton pizza establishment, it's like, it's possible that they could get that money together. So, and again, I will yield to Dr. Bayetta on the use of fundraising.
Yeah.
And it's, and it is a, I mean, it would be through Pops, so it wouldn't be through the schools.
I am not a superintendent against canning. The practice in Stoughton has been that it's not looked upon gracefully, I guess, it would be the word, within our, within our past practice and so on and so forth. And by the way, to Ms. Powers' point, that goes back literally to the nineteen nineties when I was on the school committee, when canning was kind of like, you know, we don't want that. We don't want kids visiting houses and knocking on doors and that type of stuff. I, I mean, the policy, and I'll pull the policy again before I make a statement, just to say, I don't think it's clear that it says you can't can. I think it's make, I think it suggests that that's, it's, it's not something we'd like to do. But when we're in difficult times and kids want to really offset their costs and they're taking the time of their community service to do that so they can do something, I, I'm not going to get in the way of it. And I don't think the committee's going to get in the way of it as long as it's being supported in a way that is safe and so on, especially when it's outside a very popular local place that we all like.
Yes, absolutely. So, unless, Mr. Barbosa, you had something to continue. I would actually like to go back to Ms. Heidi Perkins. But I'll wait to see if you wanted something else to say on canning.
Oh, no, it's just, I mean, I can give you a little bit more detail on what we did at the meeting is that went there and got two boxes of Hillids chocolates to sell. I paid for one and then I have another one to sell and I'll probably pay for the other. But the school or the, the band pays fifty dollars for a box and tries to bring in about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per box.
You'd love a chocolate.
Yeah, I know. My opinion, I just
And it gets more efficient.
Well, yeah, and give them, I'd rather give them the hundred dollars and that way they don't have to worry about the inventory because most of the chocolates I end up buying it myself. I know it, not everyone can do that.
A lot of Stoughton kids do that.
Yeah. But, you know, a hundred dollars, I don't mind donating once a quarter or two to support the, the kids in the band, my child being one of them. I just think that we probably have to do it through the school committee. Donate the money through the school committee for a specific task and then goes there because it's over the twenty-five dollars limit, I believe. I don't remember what that is. Maybe Heidi can help us then.
Yes, you could donate, or anybody can donate any amount to the school. It's to an individual, like say to a teacher or to one of us, you know, myself or something. It's fifty dollars a year. But this would not be going to an individual. So, just for anybody who's listening, donations to any program are always acceptable in any amount. The school committee, of course, has to accept it under the law, but they obviously always do as long as we just let donies know that they cannot make the donation very narrow that they're, you know, they can donate it to the band and then the band would use it for whatever, but that type of thing to the music program or something like that is, is about as narrow as we usually would accept. And with the intent of, they would say what their intent is, but that's generally what's, you know, the, the normal way of accepting gifts. So, if that helps.
Yeah, I just want to say that it's a little bit different with the band because they have their own nonprofit entity, like a boosters that Dr. Bayetta has, has talked about often. So, you wouldn't be donating the money to the schools. You would be giving it to the nonprofit. And it would be used for the mission of the nonprofit, which is for the band, for whatever. And that nonprofit doesn't just include the marching band. It includes band. And, and I think even it might include Pops also is invested in that theater program. So, I don't think that people have to necessarily go through the school committee for that. Just kind of a clarification for people who are listening.
If, if we can just simply bring the conversation back to the agenda item, just point of order, if we can bring it back to the, the budget. Ms. Powers, I believe you had some additional questions?
I did. So, if we are going to be in a three-plus-million-dollar shortfall for, for this fiscal year twenty-seven budget, I want to point out that last month, the town assessor said that in the fiscal year twenty-seven, we should have about one point six, if we're lucky, one point six million dollars. So, um, tell me where the town, where you think the town, short of a Prop two and a half override, where that difference is going to come up? Because if the town only has one point six million in the operating budget, then how are we going to get three million for the school?
Well, we, we typically get most of our funding through Chapter Seventy, which is the state allocation. So, if you take a look at, for example, our current sixty-seven, sixty-eight million dollar budget, about thirty-two million of it is local. The remaining of it is from the Commonwealth and grounded on the state formula. So, that is the reason why House One is so important to, to schools is that we have a basis of a number right now and the question will be how much more above that is Chapter Seventy, if at all? We don't know that until House One comes out.
So, Chapter Seventy funds are not included in this seventy-three-million-dollar budget?
Well, remember that we anticipate as a institution, that's part of that minimum net school spending process and foundation budget and all of that to be receiving a number based upon the formula that comes to Stoughton. Now, legally, those funds go through the general fund. Some communities, almost all communities, give it to the top, to the schools, whatever the number is. We have it verbally and in written form from last week's PowerPoint presentation that the school department would get Chapter Seventy funds. So, that's the reason why we wait to see how much of a head it do we really have going forward. Is it three point four? Is it one point four? Is it two and a half? Is it the full three? Is it the full three point four? We won't know that until those Chapter Seventy funds are announced in about six weeks.
Do you anticipate us getting an, go on, Heidi. I'm sorry. I don't want to talk over you.
If it's okay, I just wanted to sort of expound on that a little bit. For, again, there might be people at home listening that, you know, we're talking sort of high level on a lot of these things. And so, Chapter Seventy money is the education money from the state, as Dr. Bayetta said, and it comes directly to the town, into the town coffers. It doesn't come directly to us. And the town uses that when they estimate all of the budgets and what they have overall is Chapter Seventy funding, their unrestricted government aid. If anybody looks up the cherry sheet, you can just look it up by cherry sheet. Desi, Massachusetts cherry sheet and all of those things to be on there, all the aid, library aid, et cetera. And so, the town will take all their anticipated revenue from the state as well as local taxes, building permits, dog licenses, what have you, right? Every kind of revenue that they take in. And generally, I'm talking very high level. And then they will estimate what the absolute costs are to give every budget in town and say it's three percent or whatever increase they're going to do that year and other costs that they have that have gone exorbitantly up, that they are mandated to do, et cetera, right? And so, they'll create their budget and in, in, in estimate or anticipate the amount of an increase that they feel they are safe saying this is the amount of the increase with all the other costs that we're going to have, right? And they'll certainly have some unpaid taxes that happen and different things. And they look at all of those things in general. I'm just saying high level. What they have said in Stoughton, you know, in the past year or two, is when they take the Chapter Seventy that they are getting this year and probably are budgeting, I know last year they said three percent, they're budgeting three percent more will be revenue to the town to support all the town budgets. So, if it goes up three percent, there probably is not going to be any extra Chapter Seventy that will be added to our budget, presumably. If it is increased by more than the budgeted, probably three percent, because that's what they used last year. I don't know what they're using for an inflation factor this year. So, if the Chapter Seventy comes in at five percent, they, the difference between that five percent and three percent presumably would be added to the school's three and a half percent increase that they're telling us now as guidance. So, that remains to be seen. And I certainly don't know this year what they, what they factored in to their budget for next year and the overall town-wide budget if they used three percent. But that's what they had said in the past year. So, a couple of years ago, that difference was only thirty thousand dollars. So, it, it really depends on what that cherry sheet allocation, Chapter Seventy is from the state, what it, it comes in at. If it's over what they're budgeting for it to come in hit, that they have already allocated with all the rest of their revenue across, across the town. And in general terms, last year I broke out because I thought it was important for people to see on the bottom of the budget page, if you might recall, the percentage of our budget that actually comes directly from Chapter Seventy into the town and our grants versus the amount that is raised by local taxation. And, you know, a rough number, about fifty percent does not come from local taxation. It's not from the taxpayers of Stoughton. It's through the state aid. Because other than their unrestricted government aid, UGGA, which they use for all the rest of the town budgets, and then Chapter Seventy, which is the school formula, as Dr. Bayetta said, they're using towards our budget, but really it's all one pot of money. They have all of their, all of their revenue, UGGA and, and our Chapter Seventy and all other revenue that they bring everywhere else in town. Put it all together and they look at all the town budgets and make a town-wide budget. So, again, I'm talking very high level. That's typically how a town or a city is going to, they have to. I mean, so, really depends on if the Chapter Seventy comes in higher, at least what they've said in the past and is generally true anywhere else. If the Chapter Seventy comes in higher than the amount of Chapter Seventy they're anticipating with the probably three percent or whatever inflation that they anticipated needing to fund the base budgets. If it comes in higher than that, presumably there'd be an amount that we could expect would come to the school, hopefully, on top of the three and a half percent. But I can't speak for the town. I mean, that's just generally what they've said over the past year or two. So, we'll have to see what the state numbers look like. And as Dr. Bayetta said, the million, millionaire's tax, as we call it, the Fair Share Act. But the state does, the state brought in quite a bit more money last year than they anticipated. So, they have some money carrying over, a significant amount, and then they'll have what they have for this year. And I presumably, they would estimate higher based on last year's revenue.
I'm sorry, can we say that one more time, Heidi? I think I missed what you just said.
So, so the state, when we voted, you know, as a state with the millionaire's tax a couple of years ago, the state brought in a significant amount more than they had budgeted for revenue. So, they have this money from last year sitting, just sitting right now, that has not been allocated to the schools or transportation yet that they need to disperse. And then, when I had gone to one of the governor's office budget people's presentation, I forget the gentleman's name, he had said, you know, that of course, they most likely would be budgeting for a higher amount of millionaire's tax to come in. And so, we are hoping that in the end, between that surplus last year and if they budget higher this year, but of course, there's three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns and charter schools, et cetera, that there might be some extra money from the state. I'm sorry, I have to plug my charger in. Guys, I'm sorry about that. You know, we're, we're hoping that the state numbers may also include, whether it's a one-time or recurring, whatever it's going to be, some amount of money that might come to the schools through the town, but to the schools with the millionaire's tax. Because the millionaire's tax, as Dr. Bayetta said at the beginning, was for transportation and education. So, that's not money that really can be used for other town needs. It should be funneled. Again, I'm speaking from going to presentations for what the tax situation is, what the state has said that they have for a surplus and making an educated guess or, you know, assumption or hope, I guess, we'll say that we have throughout the whole education community in finance that the state will have some sort of extra payment or amount allocated to the schools. But again, we will not know that.
That's a tough, that's a tough sell on hope, on on hope. So our chapter seventy is closely tied to income levels and poverty levels and how many students are on free and reduced lunch. And if I'm right, those levels really haven't changed in Stoughton from last year to this year substantially, that would increase our chapter seventy funds. It's possible that maybe something will happen at the State House with the millionaire's tax, and we can hope for that. I believe you you gave us some indication that we receive from the taxpayers' pockets. About thirty one percent of our school budget, I think you said thirty one, thirty two percent, comes from the taxpayers' pockets, and the rest is aid that we get from various sources. If we're really not going to be getting much increase in those in that aid, but we need a three million dollar increase. In the town itself, the taxpayers are only seeing about a one point six million dollar increase in TIFs and new growth. I think I think this budget is going to be a difficult sell. And we may be in some real trouble because it's not just the special education that is that is really getting us with these new students that are coming in, but also we are in our biggest two contract negotiations, which will come with increases because that's how negotiations go. So our salaries are about eighty percent of our budget. So I I'm I'm I would love to be hopeful, but I am highly concerned that we have a budget that's three million over that is using funds that we don't normally use this year and that the town doesn't have the money to give us. So I'm not sure how to rectify that, but it's certainly an eyebrow eye raising.
Yeah, and and I just want to say that, you know, I I didn't hear the presentation that you heard on the one point six million, but new growth, there's obviously the existing base that's going to have your prop two and a half presumably increase on the entire base, and then one point six million in new growth is beyond the two and a half percent on the base of of your taxpayer. So new growth is, you know, is separate from.
I think it was eight hundred thousand for the new growth and then another eight hundred thousand for the TIF and the yeah, so it's one point six altogether. Yeah, go on, Dr. Bayes. I don't want to step on you here.
Just briefly know that I think you're making some really interesting comments that are really grounded on the concerns that we're going to have once we have some real numbers. Two things that I think are really important. We have growth and all the stuff that you just said in your accurate statements, because I heard the same thing. But we do have a stabilization account with ten million dollars in it. And we're going to have in excess of four or five million dollars in free cash coming in this year. So at some day, the rainy day account, sometime, at some point, it's raining. And so, you know, discussions will will have to take place at some point. I'll wait, again, I'm going to wait until I see the facts and and what they mean, but this has been one of the concerns that I've had about not utilizing free cash in a way that got us to a mathematical equation that made sense and just going straightforward to zero. But that's not my call.
Yeah, I from what my understanding of free cash, and that is a limited understanding. Number one is that it's it's not normally used in the operating budget unless it's kind of voted in to the operating budget. But not just that, is that free cash is also helping us with our triple A bonding, which we desperately need with the new South School building, especially since the select board changed the terms where most people believed that we were going to have a thirty year bond. They now moved it down to a twenty year bond, which is going to increase everyone's payment on that debt exclusion. And I think a lot of people don't even know that yet. And when they get their tax bills, there's going to be a lot of upset people. There're going to be a lot of upset people. If we can at least get that good triple A bonding, then maybe at least for the second payment, we can hit it so that if we get a good interest rate on that, which I think is why we don't use free cash. If I'm making sense. Heidi, Dr. Bayes?
Yeah, I I believe that the discussion is correct based on folks' economic perspective of how that happens. I mean, I came from a town that used free cash every single year and had a bond rating that was very high. So as it pertains to the the bond rating right now, it's a it's a high bond rating. And so I I think the interest rates supposedly are coming down. We'll see when the when the time comes, when the first payments are due and you start to really look at the bundling of the bonds for the not only that project, but whatever the town decides to do long term in terms of other interest that they have that potentially could come down. So, yeah, I'm not suggesting that you take stabilization. I'm just simply saying, you know, those are discussions that potentially still have to happen or other means have to take place. I mean, if you if you have millions of dollars coming in in free cash, again, not my decision. So I just have to make a decision on what I'm provided. And then slash and burn away if that's what you need to do. But at the end of the day, the the concern that I have is this, as I said earlier tonight, this hasn't been something that we created. It's something that's come to us that we have to handle because of all of the situations, i.e., if in fact the chapter seventy money doesn't go up because of of your earlier statement around, you know, that the changes in the high needs and poverty and all of that. Well, that's going to be a direct reflection on taking all of those one hundred and thirty nine students from the shelter out of our account that we had nothing to do with to begin with. Because remember, we got a hundred and five dollars per kid, but every October first, if they were here by October first, which early on, as everything changed, they were, they went into the formula. So to now use that against us is something I have a really hard time with because it's a direct, it's a direct negative to the town of Stoughton, who simply just opened up its doors, not only as a school system, but as a town. So to then hurt us as a town by therefore hurting the the economics of the school department under the formula, it literally, it's never happened before because we've never had that influx. I mean, we had the we had the major catastrophe in Puerto Rico that didn't bring us these type of numbers. Now, that was the last one that we had. So I'm really concerned about that because it does it it everything that we had to do and now to have us slammed in our face under the formula is something that I'm going to be really, really fighting for with our elected officials and saying it's not right that these communities get nailed for this. We just did our job. And it's never happened before.
Yeah, that's how generous Stoughton is. We're an amazing town when it comes to that. I I don't, you know, I hate to put out doom and gloom, but certainly I want all of us to be aware that these things are kind of still occurring, and this could be, this could be a tough one for us this year. But, you know, not just this year, but we have a new superintendent coming in, and this could prove to be very difficult for our new superintendent to try to to negotiate. So, yeah, I agree with you. I hope that we get more on our chapter seventy and they take into consideration that as a town, no town took in more migrant families than Stoughton. I'm going to say that again, not cities, but we are the town that took in the most migrant families. So I certainly hope that that is the case. I have some more nuanced questions. This was kind of a
Any any further questions for the budget? Yeah, let just bring it back to the budget, please.
Yes, I am. It's it's the budget. It is the budget, but I do want to I I'll wait if you want me to in case my, you know, someone else has a question.
No, I I think you're the only one with questions at this point, Ms. Powers.
Okay, then I would like to go on to substitute teachers that I noticed that every building has a new line item for a building-based substitute teacher. And I think OMS has two new substitute teacher lines. Can you can you tell me what that what what's going on there? Please. Heidi, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. So we've actually had building-based subs for a number of years, and as when I mentioned earlier that we didn't budget for some positions last year, but we kept them, building-based subs is a group of them. So we did not budget for them, alt ed, kindergarten aids, et cetera. When we even brought our budget down to where we landed, which was higher than what the town gave us, we had taken all of those out of the budget with, at that time, a possibility that those positions that we did not put in would would end up being cut. So at the risk of, you know, I don't I don't want to sound like I'm meddling in town affairs or anything in any way. So just take this for what it is, because I don't mean this in any other way. In the end, two things to go on for the substitutes. We took the cost of what substitutes are actually costing us, whether they're called in day to day or whether they're building-based subs. This the amount of money we would budget is the same either way. Last year, we had determined that, or even before that, on the administration determined that it is much more reliable to have a building-based sub because it's very difficult to get subs on a call-in basis, and you have to have a body in the classroom. So every district is struggling to get subs. So we stayed with the model last year. You didn't see it necessarily in those school lines, and you see it back in because we actually never cut them, but they've been there for years. And ultimately, if we did not have them, we would add the same amount of money to the regular substitute line because that's what we're really spending. So it's not a cost that can be cut. It's just going to be, do we keep a a reliable person every day? And they are used every day. Every day, there's people out. So do we keep at least one reliable person and have less you know, exposure to trying to vie for the same subs that every district around us is, you know what I mean, and and having coverage? So so that's what that is. But I also, you know, wanted to add with all of these things that have occurred that two things. One is there is a sped stabilization fund that the town set up, which we may or may not have to request some funds out of. We'll see if there's more placements, et cetera. It won't solve the problem, but it's it's there. But the overarching thing that I think is important is that while we did use the second year of the IDEA sped grant, and we are using a fair amount of money out of the year behind money of circuit breaker, it goes to, you know, yes, there's costs there. But it goes to the point that we would have had to cut if we were using two million of that combined money or two point four million or whatever it is this year, we would have had to have cut that two point four million at the beginning of this year, which would have most likely included staff. So people can look at it one way, but the other way to look at this is that we used the school's own funding sources to, before going to the town well, so to speak. And we have, as a school district, this is just me experienced for many years in other districts, so this isn't particular, this is Stoughton or anywhere else, that we have used all of the resources available to the school first before asking the town to give a supplement to the budget. So I think that speaks a lot to, first of all, that the absolute need was there. And secondly, to the fact that we're not just, you know, there's no money anywhere. There there is, there isn't any money anywhere. It's not that the school is sitting on funds that they can use. This is the last year of money that there would be in the last place to go to have funded to keep everything as whole as could be in this school year. But again, if you have, if you're using two or two and a half million dollars of those second-year funds, that is a structural deficit that is occurring in this year that is part that rolls forward to next year. So it's not that the budget went up three and a half million dollars. It's that the budget probably is about a million dollars more in a deficit than it actually was in this year. So if we're using two and a half million dollars, I'm I'm just rounding it off right now. I don't know where we'll land. But if you're using two and a half million dollars of those year behind funds, that was fiscally responsible to have that year behind. But not every district does. I mean, even in Wellesley, they use the circuit breaker in the year they get it. They still do. So, you know, it's not like you have to. But what I I guess the point I'm making is that there is nowhere else to go in school funding. There's no grants, there's no gifts, there's nothing else revolving that we can really go to. And the school district in the school committee and and everybody as a whole has looked at and used all available funding to make it work without significant cuts. But even within that, as we've said over the last couple of years, we kept the increases, sometimes decreases in expense budgets. Sometimes the increases were so minimal, we kept them level funded. And we've had two years of budget freezes on top of that. So every me as a person, as a budgeted person, I'll just say it that way, not as a resident or anything else, from a budget and finance perspective, that every available thing that we could do, choice that could be made, direction that could be given from the superintendents, the school committee, et cetera, as far as freezes, as far as the funding sources that there were, pretty much are exhausted at this point, but the school district has figured out every which way to absorb the shortfall over the last really couple of years. It was smaller, and then now we're at the point where we're we're using that money and the shelter funds went away as well. So and the ester funds also expired a year ago that the district, all the districts had in the country for, you know, five years. So the reality is the the revenue sources have dried up and we are using all available funds that the school department has and the school committee has to use to have not made what might have been significant cuts one year ago or two years ago or this year. And and so now we don't have any other way unless either there's more funding from the state, from the town, or there's cuts. And and that's why that language is, that text is right in on the front cover of your budget sheet next to the shortfall, combination of any additional funding TBD or budget cuts TBD after state aid is announced. That three point five, three point four million, three point five million. We don't know yet, but I I just, for the people who aren't seeing maybe the budget document, maybe there's people listening at home or even staff that are listening. I just really wanted to point out all of the hard work with the blessing of the school committee and all of our staff and administrators and everybody else, everything that's been done to date to make it work. And we just are sort of out of options. So again, not a commentary on one town versus another, just a finance commentary.
Can you just explain what the stabilization account is that you're talking about? It's a special education stabilize stabilization account that's through the
Breaking up a little bit, but I got the rest of it, I think. Stabilization fund, the town can have several of them, and they do have several of them. It's up to each town whether they choose to create a stabilization fund. They're allowed under the law for certain purposes. The town of Stoughton does have a special education stabilization fund. They put money into it at the town meeting vote to fund it. And it's really generally for if a very expensive placement occurs or most towns do not supplement the ongoing operating budget with it. It's like when you see a spike, something happens, right? So generally, they're going to say budget for the kids that you know and that are, you know, that you already know in your budget, but then, hey, after the budget's all done and voted, you had one or two or three more placements, you cannot absorb that. Well, then you would go and ask the selectmen to vote to transfer money out of the stabilization fund into your budget. So it's a little bit of a cushion that the town has created, which is great. Not every town has one, so that's a that's a plus. And that is if we have more move-ins or more placements or whatever it may be, we haven't gone to that well either in the past. But that might be something that has to be discussed in next year if we have additional placements because we clearly don't have any capacity to absorb more and more and more.
Did I hear you say ten million dollars is in there right now?
No, I Joe, Dr. Bates, please, if you know, I think it was six hundred thousand. They put more in.
Yeah, there's two hundred, there's five hundred thousand in the special education stabilization account. There's ten million dollars in the town stabilization. There's $10 million in the town stabilization account.
That's why I heard that.
The special education fund is a request from the school committee to the select board to remove those funds for those extraordinary circumstances, i.e. that Heidi just noted.
Okay. All right, then I had a question about contracted services. As I see that we have a lot of contracted services. I'm looking at, well, for me it was page 26. It was under district wide that I saw the biggest one, although contracted services were kind of dabbled in everywhere. But it was under district wide, it was one to the fourth line down where it's, where it says contracted services. Fiscal year 26 was 15,000. And then I see recommended for 27 is $105,000, which is a $90,000 increase. Can you tell me what these contracted services are that we use? Maybe we can get a list, Dr. Bayda, of all of the contracted services that the schools use?
I will provide you with a list of the contracted services.
Thank you. Do you happen to know offhand what this $105,000 is?
So it could be things like a counseling third party that we utilize for providing direct services to students. It can be, again, I'm not looking at the one, I don't have the one you're looking at in front of me. But contract services is literally any third party that we utilize for service delivery to the district in whatever way it may be. So it could be early college, it could be counseling, it could be, I'm trying to think. It could be something in, in facilities as an example. But we'll get you a, a list of contract services by each of those areas.
Thank you. I'd love to know who we're using for contractors and what the cost is and what it's getting used for.
Most of our.
Here is, is what really kind of pushed it over for me was that it's an increase of $90,000. I think that's what kind of caught my eye on that.
That could also be, and I don't have it in front of me, that could also be a correction. In other words, it was in a prior, it was in the wrong line item the prior year and it's being moved to the, to the right one. So I'll have to figure out the contract services that we have, A, and B, which ones were corrected within the budget. I believe that one is a corrected one. So it's a negative somewhere else because it's a positive there, but I will get to those answers.
Okay, yeah, because I also see it under the high school, under athletics, where it is actually a decrease in contracted services. It looks like it was 155,000, now it went down to 68,000, a drop of 87,000. So again, it was something that caught my attention that said, well, what services are we losing for our athletics if we're dropped 80? Go on, go on, go on, Ms. Perkins.
So I, I just wanted to expand on a couple of things. Contracted services is any labor that we hire for, the plumber that comes in, the guy that works on the boiler, the trash company, PD providers, when our staff have to take a PD course. And it also, because we have not had accounts in munis through all, since 2015, that are specifically say software, which is what most of, you know, took the place of textbooks. Most of the kids are on multiple, multiple educational programs. That is right now under contracted services. I will be breaking out more accounts here and anything that is software, which is really again, takes the place of textbooks or online textbooks. That's what everybody's on every day, all day. Right now, that is also under contracted services. And you're about athletics, some of that was moved to another line. You can see another line was increased. But additionally, the athletics has gate fees from the games, football and hockey. And so that goes into a revolving fund. So when I was working with the athletic director and I said, okay, you know, you can actually drop the budget here a little bit because you have 30,000 a year in the revolving fund from gate fees. So this is what was submitted to us. So with taking all that into account. I will say also that, just as a general comment, some of our neighboring towns, for instance, maybe the girl swim team or whatever, they don't have enough to make a team. We don't either. So we actually are tuitioning and I'll call it tuition, but really a fee for some kids from neighboring schools to be on a joint team that our athletic director is putting together. And sometimes we take advantage somewhere else. And so we bill those teams out to offset some of the cost. And we just had, I believe we're also going to do that for one special education student in another district that we will be bringing in a tuition, probably pretty much immediately. The special education director, Ed Clark, talked to me last week and I said, yes, we can absolutely do that. That's common in schools where we might have a program. We don't have a lot of room, but if we have a program that has room and we can bring in some additional revenue. So in many ways, the staff are trying to, you know, bring in revenue from other sources that comes up haphazardly as, as there's need from other districts and they reach out for, you know, some of these smaller things, but it adds up. So, so I, you know, that is what was submitted for the athletics budget, knowing that he's going to have, the athletic director will have 30,000 at his disposal a year and the gate fees out of the revolving fund as well. And Julie's got her hand raised. I don't know if she has something else.
Julie, I was gonna say, go ahead, Julie. Lost her. Where'd she go?
Right. Just wanted to say that that contracted services line in the athletics budget in the high school, that 68,000 covers the athletic trainer's fee in the contract that we have with the athletic trainer, that's 68,000. And some of that money, you'll notice that the transportation line increased and the contracted services line decreased. There was a shift of money in those spaces.
So did the athletic trainer, did we drop one or did we decrease their pay? Why did it go from 155 down to 68?
Yeah, so that the, I don't know, I, I'd have to go back to my current budget to see why it said 155 this year. But the athletic trainer's fee has not been, has been around that 68,000 for the past couple of years. So where, what we have in that 155 right now under contracted services might just be if money allotted in the wrong line, but I'd have to go back and look.
Okay, well, while I get you.
Yep.
In that same spot, it says medical supplies dropped by more than half, which is concerning to me that we're dropping medical supplies for our athletes. Can you explain what that, what happened there, what that is? I'm sure we're not.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's some tightening of our belts a little bit too. You know, we were told as a, as, you know, each building was told that we had to come in at certain amounts too. So just to be mindful of that, there was some tightening of belts. I think that, you know, that's not going to be, you know, our kids are going to get the, the medical attention they need, period, end of story, you know, full stop. That's our priority. But I think that there's a lot of things that we already have either in supply or are supplied through our contract with our athletic trainer or through our own nursing department itself that is able to pick up some of that loss there. But again, you know, we, we were instructed to come in at, you know, as low as, you know, you know, where we're supposed to come in. And so there was some tightening of our belts.
Okay. It still is a concern that we lost $19,000 in medical supplies. I mean, I'm sorry, I know you just explained it, but it, I'm still looking at $19,000 of medical supplies that I can't imagine we're just have lying around in Band-Aids and gauze. You know? I mean, I don't know if maybe we just had a big purchase?
We did have to buy an ice machine last year. That may have came out of that medical supplies line. I'm not exactly sure, but we did have to buy, replace our ice machine in the athletic trainer's office. So that could potentially be the bump for last year.
That would be medical supplies for concussions and lumps and bumps. All right. That, that makes sense to me. Thank you for making that point. I have, well, we're still in high school. So I'm looking from, from my document, I'm on page 25. I'm sorry, I don't have it in that new document. I only got it an hour ago. So, but it's under humanities. And it's a drop of 117,000, actually almost 118,000 dollars. The same with the STEM curriculum, dropped $91,000, which looks like a really big drop. Are we losing services to students in humanities and STEM?
Those are actually under the district wide budget, but budget. So I would turn that back over to Dr. Bayda.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, this is part of the changes of trying to align budgets around where they're supposed to be. So you have things like STEM and humanities budgets and so on. So it doesn't include every single person who currently is working for Stoughton Public Schools. As a general education teacher, special education teacher, whatever position they have, is currently employed in the budget proposal before you. There's no, there's no movements. What we have done is tried to move things to, that are district-wide items to actually be district-wide items. But that's what you see there. It's a correction within the, within the budget.
I'm sorry, can you explain that again? You said the money is just moved?
Yeah. If you, the year before you joined the school committee, the first year, we moved into having our budgets go over into school budgets because they weren't done that way. So what, what we're trying to do, we're in the second time of doing it. Next year will be the third time is we're trying to make our budgets as accurate according to the school level versus district level or anything and everything that should be there. So the bottom line hasn't changed. It's just, if, if there's a positive in one area, there's a negative in another area. And again, we can better explain where that is. I just don't have it in front of me. Because we're looking at two different budgets.
Yeah, I just, I would, yeah, I'm trying to get these things explained so that when people say, hey, we just lost like a ton of services. You know, I don't want the, I know that, I know that when Heidi, when Ms. Perkins came on, I'm sorry, I keep calling you by your first name. When Ms. Perkins first came on, there were a lot of things that she was trying to fix in the budget. And I remember you really working hard trying to get this done. So, and I appreciate all of your hard work in doing this because it will streamline it to make it easier in the years going forward. So I, you know, sometimes I ask questions because I know the answer and I just want to make sure it gets out there in the public that we know that these things are happening, you know, and it's, all is okay. So we're not losing money in STEM, we're not losing money in humanities. It's just we're repositioning the lines, the line items so that it streamlines and makes it easier going forward.
Yeah, the most, the most important part right now in our budget is outside of the special education discussion we had earlier, every position that is currently in the high school, in the middle school, at the DAW school, at the blah 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 school are currently funded in this budget. That's a key component of service delivery, right? Because that's where it starts with, the 80% of the budget, the personnel. They're currently all in the budget plus the department that's added new positions. So if we have 11 science teachers at the high school, this budget still reflects 11. If we have 15, it still reflects 15, hasn't changed.
Okay, thank you for that. I have a question about the Gibbons Elementary School. It says literacy consumables that I didn't see in some of the other schools. Could you just tell me what a literacy, what a literacy consumable and why it's only in Gibbons? That's on page five of mine, if that helps anyone. But it's under the Gibbons Elementary. On the page I said supplies.
So the, the new correction on page six is that it's being made, it's actually increasing by $422. So that's probably a holding area for all of KDA five consumables for literacy.
Or. Sorry, I didn't mean to over-speak you. The version that was sent out to everybody today, if you were to look on page seven, for those of you who are looking at that version, under Hanson, you'll also see literacy consumable. So essentially, those were in a district-wide budget. And now we are breaking it out based on headcount. In fact, all of the elementary budgets, I started it last year. We got a little bit more refined this year. We, we had most of it done last year. So that we, instead of a school putting in for 3% on everything that they've always had, and there was quite a disparity where you might see a lot more in science at this school than this school. And the one that's putting more in sciences actually has less student population, right? So, and I met with the five principals this year. But I started it last year and it's typical in all other districts too, where for instance, you take the science budget across all five elementaries and it fluctuates, the cost per student will be, take science divided by all the elementary kids who take science, right? All the, well, the elementary population. But if this school all of a sudden gets 10 more students and the other schools don't, then more of that money is now going to go to the school with 10 more students because they need, especially at the elementary level, it's very much hands-on. It's very much consumables, workbooks, you know, whatever it is, right? That they're buying for the kids, art supplies, whatever it is. It's, it's hands-on manipulatives and materials. It's not just on software all day, like that they, where they might have extra licenses available to them at the upper grades. So now what we do is we take every one of these, you know, art, music, et cetera, and say, what is the elementary budget divided by how many students there are in the total elementary schools? And come up with a, whether it's a dollar 57 per kid or 282 per kid or whatever the math ends up being, because they're weighted differently depending on the subject matter. And then we allocate based on the October 1 enrollment at each school, how much of that's elementary science budget is going to go to each school. This year, where you'll see some fluctuation, the principals, I've met with the five principals and said, you know, it's up to them as long as we're consistent. We need to have parity. Eventually, all of the kids from the five elementaries go up to one sixth grade, right? So we don't want to have one district spending more on reading or science than, I mean, one school, reading or science than the other schools are, for instance. So again, this is pretty common in pretty much every district. And so they then, as a group, determined the amount of money in the overall elementary expense budgets they wanted to be for science supplies versus math versus music or whatever. And once they gave me the percentage of their budget, we take the percentage that they determined was they felt appropriate. And again, take the whole elementary population, student pop as of October 1st, and then what is at each school, and that's how that gets done. And that will be done every year. We did mostly that last year.
So Heidi, it's based on the count of enrollment on 10-1 for any of those efforts. So that long-term, you know exactly how much you have to expend on items like consumables at this school.
And, and specifically on the literacy consumables, that used to be in a district-wide budget, even though everything else on the elementaries was already in their budget. So you couldn't see it. So if the public was looking at the budget, it would appear that there was much less spent on literacy in each school or at the elementary level as a whole because it's in a district-wide budget that was one lump sum of money in a district-wide. It's basically not really that transparent. Like if somebody looks at a district-wide says, there's consumables, who knows what that's for? Now it's down in the elementaries. It was moved out of a district-wide budget into the elementaries that makes it very specific, the amount of each school and very specific what it's being used for. So the reading consumables that our KDA eight curriculum coordinator works on for the reading and literacy, et cetera, will still be the person that spends this money as has always happened, but it will show up in the schools where people should be able to see it for transparency.
We love transparency. Thank you for that. I have a question about the South Elementary School. And, well, for me, it's page nine. And I haven't had a chance to look at the other one yet. But for South Elementary, under music teacher, it looks like a music teacher was added. I know you said there wasn't, but that's what it, that's what it's appearing to look like.
So I can speak to that as well. So the music teachers used to be more, not just the music teachers, but specifically in, in the area of music and band, that the teachers were allocated. And again, not uncommon, either practices is right, is not right or wrong. It's different districts do it different ways. But they were allocated maybe at the school where they were primarily at. But they were allocated maybe at the school where they were primarily at. So if they were doing point six at this elementary versus point four at that, you might just put the one point O FTE, you know, the full person salary in this one school. There's nothing wrong with that. But this year, we actually broke it down. You'll see like point one, point one. If you look up further, what is that one, the art teacher? My eyes are going a little pace. So you'll see.
No, you might have that art teacher, point one.
Point one, because we actually got more granular this year. And we looked at that one art teacher and said, how much time are you spending at each location? So as, so you'll see those little bits and pieces. It's not extra staff. You'll see it somewhere else in the budget. If you added up all the pieces, you might say, oh, a band teacher was one point O, looks like they were cut. It's not. When you find all the little pieces throughout the budget, they're just being allocated more granularly within the school where they're actually spending their time.
So is this music teacher being shared among more than one elementary school? Is that what's happening?
This one appears that this music teacher right now, to the best information we had, is full-time at, at the South. You'll see that more, like I said, art band. I don't recall, this was like sort of the end of the budget cycle preparation where we would get to that granular level. But we took, we send out staffing sheets to all the directors and all the principals at the beginning of the year, again, common budget practice, tell us everybody that's working in your building and how much they work in your building, and we allocate that way. But sometimes that's a little fuzzy, you know? We might get answers back that it comes out to more than one person, right? We take all the little fractions and it's like, oh, it's one point two people, but it's only one name, like, you know? So then we reach out to the actual staff member and say, can you give us a better idea? So again, we're getting more granular to be more transparent. But it's not necessarily that it's more or less staff. I'm sorry, Dr. Baters.
Yeah, just to interject, Ms. Powers, you will, and the committee will be receiving from Matt Colentonio, all of the part-time people and where they are, so that you know exactly where they are as of what the knowledge we have. Remember that some of these positions could be a point two in one school and then it moves to point four at some other point during the year because of whatever situation. But you're going to get a one-pager. In my last district, we used to call it the vieta school. I used to take anybody that was shared staff and it literally would be on one form. And then it would be, and so that way, when you got those questions, it was just straightforward. So I'll have Matt release that D U A S A P.
Okay. I think that might have also helped with some of the other questions I had on some of these other schools too.
Yeah, we do have a significant number of shared staff, so that, that, that one memo, if you will, will make it very clear to you. And then you can cross-check it as you wish.
Yeah, I, you know, I feel like I'm gonna need more time just to try to look at both, at both budgets because I only just got one of them. There's more contracted services.
Yeah, and the most recent one that you received, Ms. Powers, is in fact from the working group. It's the cleanest one after we went through our meetings to try to clean it up. It, it's, bottom line doesn't change, it changes because of the, of the change in the three five from the three nine five as one example, or three nine eight, I'm sorry. But then the number of people and stuff, except for the special ed does not change.
Yeah, no, I'm sure. I just, you know, you only have a few things we do around here. The superintendent is done. So we have budget and we have policy, and I don't do policy. So budget is, is it? Budget is it? More contracted services.
Then, Ms. Powers, if I could just say on the contracted services to help frame out, basically, we either have hard items, materials that we purchase, that, you know, are items that we purchase and get delivered. Everything else is contracted services. So you're talking a wide swath of anything and everything that is, falls under contracted services by the DESI code and, and, you know, what they are. So you're either looking at, again, materials or contracted services, and that makes up of almost everything in education, whether we have speakers come in, whether we have field trips, the buses are contracted services, speakers, field trips can be contracted services. Staff can be contracted services if we're using an agency. But auditors of anything and everything, testing companies that we've, you know, if the special ed department sends out tests to be scored by a company, all of that is contracted services. There's, there's probably a high-level list that could be sent to you, as, as Dr. Bader said. But we don't know always ahead of time exactly what they'll be spent on. It's as things arise. But as Ms. Miller said, also, the, the trainer is a contracted service. Anybody that's coming in and performing any kind of anything is a contracted service. The bus company, transportation is contracted service. So, so it's really, it's either we purchase something that is a, you know, tangible or it's a contracted service, and that's how it's categorized. So I just wanted to point that out.
I didn't know that software was considered contracted services. It's intuitive. So I do look forward to that list.
Yep.
Perhaps you can discuss and go over with me the alternative education program, which under fiscal year twenty-six is all zero, lined out. But in twenty-seven, we have two thousand, two hun, two thou, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. But that for me is on page twenty-three, alternative education program.
The alternative education program came out of all of the funds not in the budget that we had to make up for, so that's where it is. So it's now the, I'm sorry, I have, I texted that. I'm having video and sound. The alternative education is if you look, if it's one of the programs that we took out of the funding for, out of the budget when we had to make up the shortfall. So it's back in the operating budget. So it's not new, it's been there. It was just paid for through the, the shelter funds and all that stuff that we did last year that was not in the budget. Now it's part of the budget.
So it was in the budget in twenty-five?
And in twenty-six, and now in twenty-seven.
Oh, okay. So it's in there in twenty-six, just not in this.
That is correct.
All right. Do we have a floating nurse?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need a floating nurse? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a request for more nursing that night, that at this time is not being funded. It has to do with a couple of different things. Number one has to do with the acuity of the issues that the students have, number one. I know that other people don't believe that, but I do. And that's a concern. And then number two, it has to do with, in our particular case, we have contract services with two nurses. And if you recall, the vote that you put this year and you took one last year, we moved those out of contract services because people wouldn't show up. And now we don't have that problem. So yes, we do have
Where does she float? Where he float?
All over.
All over, but predominantly, yeah, but predominantly, I, I mean, I've seen her at the middle school, I've seen her at the high school, a lot of the elementary. But all over. It's all, it's all based on you.
When I look at the preschool, the Jones preschool, I thought that was self-sufficient.
Has never been self.
Never been self-sufficient.
It's an impossible thing to do because of the cost of the salaries and what you charge. You would have to triple the charge in order to just break even because of the cost of those staff members are average. They, they usually stay long and they're expensive because they're high-quality and high-performing. But no, it is, it is not self, it's just literally a fee.
And, and I'll add to that, I'm sorry, if that's, can I add to that if that's okay? So the preschool is a mandatory mandated special education program. So while we can and do have non-special education kids attend and are tuition-based, the more than fifty percent, off the top of my head, I haven't seen the numbers, but generally at least fifty percent. And you can have fifty percent non-special education paying students come in roughly under state guidelines. So that helps offset the cost. If we did not have non-special education kids attending our preschool tuition-based, the cost of the program would go up significantly because the town still has to have it and fund every bit of it. So just wanted to point that out. This is not a preschool like a daycare or a private preschool that you just want to send your kids to. The staff would all be there. We would still have all of the program. It's just a way to help offset costs and also it's best for the kids, and that's why the state has those numbers that, that, you know, fifty, forty-nine, fifty-one, or, you know, whatever close to that you can get because they, the modeling that non-special education students bring to the program and vice versa, those kids are in with their special education peers and they all learn from each other, whether it's acceptance or learning styles and all the different things, right? And I'm no expert, so anybody can jump in. That's, it's more in the education field than I am. But generally, that's how those preschool programs work. But again, it's a special education cost, the cost of all those staff go into all of our, when we talk special, special education, that is part of the special education budget, even though we show it separately so people realize it's not the K to twelve. And to know that there is a significant cost of well over a million dollars to run that program, but we are mandated to run that program.
Okay. All right. That does it for me. Thank you all so much. Really great info.
So Ms. Chris, if I may, on behalf of the, of the committee, I have a small list of items. I'm going to email you tomorrow with what those items are so we can get a response from you that there's no other items that you are looking for. But of course, if you are looking for other items, please contact me directly. I'm happy to start having our folks work on it to get it to you as part of this entire budget process. I will now begin the process after next week of creating the quote handbook, like we did last year, the workbook that has, you know, Jeff works on the pictures and the highlights of the year, then we have the line item budget and we have the charts, more charts and stuff that we're asking that, that we want to put in here and all that stuff. So I don't want to take up any more of your time, but great meeting. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, so much for your attention and intentionality around the, the budget and making sure that we are fiscal stewards on behalf of the town. I really appreciate it. Appreciate the time and energy the administration took in answering our questions and being available for community members who are watching this or perhaps listening in on the call. Just want to let you know that next week on Tuesday, we will have a public hearing where community members can come and ask questions directly about the budget. That will be held at the district office starting at six P M. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I did not see that. Ms. Powers?
I would ask that the chair put homework on the agenda sometime soon. We are having issues again with, I'm just gonna say homework. I'm just gonna say that and we'll, if we could have that on the agenda. I know budget takes precedence, but please add it to the bud, to the agenda when you can. Thank you.
Of course. We will add it to the next regular meeting agenda, which is on January the thirteenth. And any school committee member can request an agenda item at, at any time. Just simply email me or Armando. With that, I did have a motion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, that was Gillian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
That was Jen. Motion has been moved and seconded. Roll call, vote. Sorry, Armando?
Hi.
Gillian?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries five zero. We adjourn at eight forty-one P M. Thank you all. See you next week.